Let me start recording.
Okay, we'll start.
Let me see, let's make sure I'm recording. Yep, we are recording now.
We're recording, okay. Time is now seven thirty. And tonight's meeting of the Emmitsburg Planning Commission is now called to order. Uh, taking a quick look, we have members of the commission with, uh, I see Joyce and Mark and myself, uh, so that's three making a quorum. And I understand we're still waiting for Bernard and, uh, Joe is is not with us this evening. I guess until Bernard arrives, uh, Mark, could you be so kind as to kind of take some notes until he, hopefully he shows up?
Sure.
Okay, very good. Okay, first thing we'll do, of course, for the opening is let's stand and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic on which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay. Uh, again, tonight we'll do as we have, uh, our other virtual meetings as far as being able to keep track of who's who's saying what and everything. First of all, we'll do our voting, uh, again, like we did last time also where, uh, we'll just do a show of hands when it comes to the approval of the minutes also at the adjournment. But for the voting of the agenda items, uh, we'll continue to do those by roll call. And also, uh, when it comes to, uh, whenever we're making comments or making a motion or a second to to please identify, uh, you're doing so. So again, we can, we can easily keep track of, uh, who says what. And I know that will help, uh, taking the notes and preparing, preparing the minutes, uh, for the next time. Any questions? Okay. Moving on to the next item of the agenda. Uh, we have the review and approval of the minutes that were written for a meeting that we held on the thirtieth of November. Uh, has anybody not had a chance to look over those minutes? Okay, does anyone have any, uh, corrections, changes, addition that you feel needs to be made to those minutes?
Not me.
Okay.
I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the minutes of November thirtieth. This is Mark.
Okay, Mark, Mark has made a motion to approve those minutes. Joyce, do you second that that motion?
Yeah, I read them all. This is Joyce and I've read them through and I didn't see any thing that needed to be corrected.
Okay, very good, Joyce. So we have a, a motion made by Mark to approve. And, uh, seconded by, uh, Joyce. And again, for this, we just do a show of hands to to, uh, to vote on these minutes. So those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes, just just raise your hand or whatever so that we can take a count. And I say one, two, three hands. And so that that's a unanimous vote for those who are present at the meeting and that motion does carry. Okay. Okay, item four, public comment. Uh, we, uh, do not have anybody showing up on a screen to be here to make a comment on a subject matter other than what's on the agenda tonight. Unless I'm missing somebody. Um, I'm hearing no, nothing to suggest otherwise. Okay, moving on to number five of our agenda for the review and consideration of the agenda items. Uh, we have, uh, total of two tonight. First of all, there are none in the old business category. But under new business, we do have two items to consider. Uh, first one we'll deal with is the, I call it like a parcel division, uh, proposal, uh, item number one. Zach, would you like to, uh, give us a little background on this one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, we have applicant of Fox and Associates, which is represented here today by Mr. Joe Cici. The owner is SPT Land LLC and the plan name is SPT Land LLC in Maryland State Highway Administration. And this is addition plat. Um, the property is on the Tiny Town Pike. Um, it's right where the Rutter's project is going to go and also the future parking ride. Uh, the proposed project consists of subdividing, uh, tax map nine parcel one forty-eight, which is the left here, if you can see the screen, my my pointer. This is currently two point zero two nine six acres and owned by SPT Land LLC and located on the Tiny Town Pike into parcel A, which is going to be this new parcel here, which is one point four nine seven two acres and parcel B. It's over here to the right, which is point five three two four acres. Parcel A will then be added to tax map nine parcel, uh, eight, which is right here. You see my pointer. And, uh, this is currently thirteen point seven nine seven seven acres owned by SPT Land LLC. And it will create a new fifteen point two nine four nine acre lot. So this be one large lot here. Parcel B to the right here will be added to tax map nine parcel forty-five, which is below parcel B here. This is currently parcel B is currently eleven point three acres, which is owned by the Maryland State Highway Administration. And this will create a new eleven point eight three two four acre lot. Uh, tax map nine parcel one forty-eight, which is this awkward parcel along Tiny Town Pike will be eliminated. Uh, the proposed use is of the subject property is consistent with the town of Emmitsburg zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. As we always do, there is our timeline. The next page, uh, we notified agencies on November tenth that was available for review. As you can see, the agencies that commented. We have not received, um, M dot S H A or Frederick County Health Department comments to date. And we are recommending to move to conditionally approve the addition plat with the following thirteen conditions. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I can go over them briefly or we can, it's up to you.
I would suggest that we, uh, just ask if anybody has a question, if you have already looked at these thirteen items. I don't see a need really to have to go through each one individually.
Sure.
Uh, Joyce or Mark, have you, uh, had a chance to look over those thirteen conditions? And if you do, do you have any questions?
No, I read them all twice. I didn't see any problems.
Okay, uh, Mark, do you have any?
I also read through them. I I don't have any issues with any of the, uh, conditions.
Okay, fine. Thanks a lot. I likewise have looked them over. I have no questions on the thirteen. Um, Zach, do you have anything else you wish to say on this?
No, this is a very cut and dry addition. We actually, uh, are glad they brought it forth because it just eliminates some, an awkward lot there. So it's good.
Okay. Do any of our other people on online care to, uh, make any comments at this point? I hear none. I'm sorry.
This is Joe Cici with Fox and Associates. Uh, no, I don't have any comments that, um, right now.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right.
Uh, just, uh, this is Tim Bieber from Rutter's. Um, just to kind of give a little bit of background to this, this whole thing. Um, earlier in the year when we met with S H A, um, to talk about easements and how, you know, we were going to get through their parking ride and they were going to get through our property. Um, it came to light, S H A thought they actually owned the piece, uh, of ground in front of them. This was old one forty right away. And their records didn't show that they had actually sold that that property. And so what this does is kind of cleans it up. What it does is it adds, um, the land that fronts the parking ride, um, property to the S H A piece and it adds the the remaining on to the the piece that Rutter's is buying from S S P T land. So it it really does kind of clean up a real abnormality out there. And, um, S S H A, this is how they wanted us to proceed and this is how we've, we've gone about, uh, to to resolve the situation.
Very good. Thank you very much for explanation.
Excuse me, could could I ask who was just speaking for the record? I I didn't quite catch who you were.
It it's Tim Bieber, B I E B E R with Rutter's.
Uh, could you spell the last name again, please?
Absolutely. I can tell you're not a believer, just like Justin, B I E B E R.
Okay, okay, got it.
Okay, thanks, thanks a lot. Uh, Mark, did you also get the the name of the other gentleman that that spoke?
Yeah, Joe Cici, I got, his name shows up, but, uh, the other guy, I didn't have it all.
Yeah, okay, very good.
Actually, if I had looked closer, I could have seen the last name, but I wasn't paying attention.
That's, that's fine. Okay, uh, uh, would somebody please make a motion on, uh, making a decision on this this, uh, application? Do I have a motion?
I'll be happy to make a motion, Mr. Chair. This is Mark. I'll move to conditionally approve the S P T Land LLC and Maryland State Highway Administration addition plat with the following thirteen conditions as outlined on our, uh, memo.
Okay, very good. Motion has been made to conditionally approve this application with the thirteen conditions that is outlined in our memo. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Second has been made by Joyce. Good. Okay, any last questions or comments from the commission? Okay, this, this being an agenda item, we will do this by roll call. With your vote, individually, please indicate with a yes, meaning to you approve with the motion. No, that you vote to not accept the motion as as presented. Joyce, how do you vote?
Yes, I approve.
Mark?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So we have three votes, yes, no votes, no. The motion carries unanimously. And thank you, gentlemen, for for your comments, uh, to this presentation.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, guys. See you.
Thanks, Zach.
Okay, next item. We have the proposal for some changes to be made to our subdivision, uh, code. Uh, I think it's under title number sixteen. We have some items to consider and Zach, would you, uh, bring us up to date on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a a brief presentation for you all. Um, but I'll start with the memo. So the purpose of this is proposed ordinance twenty-one dash zero one, which would amend town code sixteen sixteen one hundred, which is currently called required recreation areas to be dedicated. Uh, the proposed amendment will require all new residential developments proposing five or more dwelling units dedicate public or private parkland dedication or pay a fee in lieu of the parkland dedication. Acceptance of any dedication shall be at the option of the mayor and board of commissioners in determining whether to accept or reject land offered for dedication. The mayor and board of commissioners shall consider the recommendation of the planning commission. So for the timeline, this was originally presented to the commissioners and the mayor on the December eighth, twenty twenty meeting. Um, and the planning commission meeting tonight, and then there's going to be a public hearing and final vote on January eleventh. I have an error in the memo. It should be twenty twenty-one. Um, I won't read the town code requirement base, but basically it has to be reviewed by the planning commission in a public hearing held before a vote. Uh, specific items for consideration. I'll, uh, bring this up after the present, the presentation here. So let me start. If you could look on the screen. See, there we go. Okay, so at the recommendation of the mayor, commissioners and planning commission, I have drafted an ordinance that would require park recreation and open space uh, for all new residential developments proposing five or more units. I have been working with Frederick County Planning Department, State of Maryland Planning Department and and the Maryland Municipal League in order to craft this ordinance. First, I would like to, uh, briefly discuss the state of Maryland's Department of Natural Resources Park Equity Tool. So Maryland D N R and the University of Maryland School of Public Health partnered in order to create a park equity uh, map in order to determine which areas in the state are in need of new park space and which communities may be underserved or underutilized by existing park space. The analysis, analysis of park equity combines the following data layers to generate a total park equity score. So population density, concentration of low income households, concentration of children under the age of seventeen, concentration of adults over the age of sixty-five, concentration of non-white population, distance to public parks, distance to public transportation, and then finally walkability. As you can see on the screen, according to this particular study, Emmitsburg Park System is equitable or fair and adequate for its residents and surrounding area. This tool is not stating we should not have more park recreation and open space. It is just stating that the current park system is adequate. Uh, the state and county planning department stated a good rule of thumb is to have parkland at least a half mile from each residence. So we created a park, parks proximity map showing that we meet this criteria on in the vast majority of our town currently. We are only lacking park area in Pembroke Woods up here to the top left and portions of Brookfield. And also on the northeastern side of U S fifteen. Over to the right here. So getting into the actual, um, ordinance here. So section A is our purpose. The purpose of this ordinance is to regulate the use of and development of land so as to assure that new development provides for the health, safety and welfare of future residents by providing lands for park recreation and open space within the town of Emmitsburg and within areas being newly developed or redeveloped for residential purposes. B, section B rules of construction. This is our legal section to provide context of words. Section C is our definitions. So section D, this is requirement of dedication of public parkland. Any developer who after the enactment of this ordinance seeks to develop land for residential purposes within the town shall be required to dedicate parkland. Acceptance of this dedication shall be the option of the mayor and board of commissioners. The decision of the mayor and the board of commissioners to accept or reject this dedication shall be, shall be conclusive in determining whether to accept or reject land offered for dedication. The mayor and commissioners shall consider the recommendations of the planning commission and the following factors. The location of the proposed park, access, slope, size, equipment, parking, landscaping and conditions. Um, uh, there are details for each factor are spelled out in the ordinance. For example, slope shall not be more than twenty percent of the offered land, or excuse me, for slope. Not more than twenty percent of the offered land shall be in the flood plain or excess a slope, uh, exceedant slope excess of eight percent. In the event the mayor and board of commissioners determines not to accept the dedication, the parkland shall be a private recreational facility to be solely maintained by the developments homeowners association. So section, um, computation of the amount of parkland required. The amount of parkland required is in a proposed development shall never be less than the minimum lot size for the underlying zoning district unless the land shall be developed as a trail or bike route and computed by the, as follows. According to the most recent census data, which is two thousand eighteen, we still don't have twenty twenties. Uh, the town of Emmitsburg averages two point six seven individuals per dwelling unit. So here's where it goes into the the calculation. In order to continue the calculation, we must determine how many acres of park and recreational area that you would like to have for every resident. Our current ratio is approximately twenty-four acres for every one thousand residents or point zero two four per individual. According to our comprehensive plan. However, we do not have an overall goal in the comp plan. So I reached out to every municipality in Frederick County and goals range from ten to twenty-five acres for every thousand residents. So, uh, the board's direction more pocket parks. So if we want pocket parks, we will need to reduce this down to at least ten acres. Uh, the higher the acres, the bigger the required park. Staff and the board of commissioners recommend ten acres for every thousand residents. So once we have this number, we can calculate the size of the required parks. For example, at a fifty dwelling unit post subdivision, we multiply that by two point six seven individuals per dwelling unit. And if we do go with ten acres, you multiply that by point zero one zero per acres per individual. And for a fifty dwelling unit proposed subdivision, this would be require a one point three four acre park and or recreation area. So, um, let's, let's talk about this now. So the the planning commission or the board of commissioners and staff recommend ten. Does the planning commission agree with this recommended goal?
Joyce or or Mark, would you, uh, either one of you want to, um, pick up on that one point only and and your questions or comments? About the number of acres per individual? Go ahead.
Yes, so, uh, I'm reading here in the memorandum and I think I heard you say as well that currently our requirement is twenty-four acres per one thousand residents.
No, actually, we do not have a a requirement. However, the current ratio with our amount of parkland and our amount of residents equals twenty-four acres per every thousand.
Oh, okay, so that's what it is currently?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. So to follow up on that, um, so so why is it that the town commissioners are looking to have more pocket parks rather than larger parks?
Well, one of the concerns of the commissioners and one of the concerns of staff and the mayor as well is these are, you know, they are very expensive to maintain. And also the liability that either the town liability insurance that either the town or homeowners association has to get, you know, it increases as the acreage goes goes up. So
Right.
The current goal is to, you know, provide some kind of recreation for the residents, the new residents. But, you know, still kind of keep it uh, affordable.
Okay.
So are you saying, Zach, that if we have that number on the low side, like ten versus twenty-four, twenty-five, that having a lower number there would likely result in more of these pocket parks across the town? Is that what we're saying here?
That's correct. So it will be a smaller park than if you were required five acres.
And we're talking about parks that would be dedicated to the town. Is that correct?
There's, yeah, so the ordinance, it allows the the board and the mayor to either take over the park as a town-owned park, or they can just say, no, we have enough parks and that's not an appropriate area um, to have a park. So then the homeowners association would be required for the upkeep.
Now, that's assuming there is a homeowners association. Is that correct?
Yeah, they would have to have a homeowners association.
But this would require a subdivision coming in, it would require them to have a homeowners, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, and I'm just wondering a little bit more about the economics here a little bit that where you're saying that having more smaller parks, are you saying that that would likely cost less to maintain than having fewer but larger ones?
Yes.
Am I hearing you right?
You're, that's correct.
It would be less to maintain a bunch of little ones than it is for a few little big ones.
Well, it's also, we're also taking into consideration the amount that it's going to cost to to build the actual park itself. So for an example, um, we'll talk about in a little bit here, I added a trail system because if a, if a fifty-five and older community would ever come into town, it doesn't make sense for them to have a playground with swings and et cetera. So
Right, right.
Yeah, we don't want, we we don't want to, you know, prohibit developers from coming in because it's going to cost so much money upfront and the larger the park, it's going to cost more, in our opinion.
Okay. All right. Um, okay, any, any, any other discussion right now on on this one topic of the, uh, number of acres per individual that these parks uh, would need to meet, keeping it on the low side to encourage more smaller parks. That's, that's what's being suggested here.
Well, well, just to that point, uh, Keith, it doesn't necessarily mean we're getting more parks.
Correct.
They just will be smaller. That we, we would be getting the same number if I'm interpreting this correct. So if you have a development of fifty houses, you either have a larger park or a smaller park. You aren't getting more parks.
Correct, correct. I see how you're, how you're, how you're thinking about that.
So, so going back to what Keith was saying, you know, would it cost less to maintain more smaller parks? This calculation doesn't give us more parks
Per the development.
Per the development, it's, they'll just be smaller.
Correct.
Right, per, per, per development. I guess I'm, I was thinking more broadly of of the whole town of of multiple developments coming along down the road that if, if, if the, if the rule is going to be suggesting uh, having smaller parks so that each of those developers would like have their own park comparing that to a larger number that was somehow, it would make more sense to have one fewer parks, but it would be bigger. And maybe I'm, I'm, I'm going, I can't, I don't know what I'm saying.
If, if you have three developments, you're going to have three parks.
Yeah.
Basically.
That's true. That's true.
So they're going to be whatever size they are.
Yeah, you're right. And to be honest, and to be honest with you, I do not see this current board and mayor taking over any more parks. Um, it's basically just to, um, you know, provide some kind of a recreational area for the new developments that are, you know, starting to think about coming into town.
So, okay, to that point, Zach, are are you saying that so if a new developer comes in, they'll, they will be required to do the upkeep? They will be required to do a park and do the upkeep?
Yes, that's correct. That's my, that's my, um, my educated guess after, you know, hearing the comments from the board and the mayor over the the past couple of months. I really do not see us taking over any more parks at this time. It's just, we do have many.
So each development will be required to have a homeowners association?
That's correct.
Okay.
But again, that's, that's only if the town rejects the dedication. Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay. All right.
So is there a consensus that ten is appropriate?
Okay, yeah, well, those are just do this on a kind of a consensus thing rather than a vote. That's all right.
But, but before we get quite that far, um,
Okay.
So before Zach, you were saying that you, uh, got information from other jurisdictions and other jurisdictions range from ten acres up to like twenty some acres per, uh, what was the number, per thousand residents?
Hmm.
So, so we'll be at the low end of other jurisdictions.
That's correct. That's correct. They were more lower than, well, no, they were more lower than higher. Um, twenty-five was Brunswick. And they were the highest in Frederick County. Um, Thurmont goes on a per square. Um, Thurmont goes on a per square footage basis. And, uh, Frederick, Frederick City was ten. And there was only one or two other ones that got back to me, but they were on the ten to fifteen range. So we'll be on the lower end. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, but Brunswick's probably skewed. They just opened a massive park.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay, Joyce, Joyce, do you have any comments at this point? How do you feel about the, the proposal to do, to require ten acres per, with a per, per thousand?
Correct.
Seems like a lot.
A lot. So you think it'll be lower than ten?
It depends upon the, the number of dwellings, wouldn't it? Of how much acres you need to have a park?
Well, I think it mostly hinges on the number of people.
Right.
And, and that's what it's being based on.
I think when we're talking about per, per thousand, per thousand residents and a ratio of what? Two point six seven per unit. So it, it does come down to, you can look at, it's also can be per dwelling unit. Or, yeah, because it's all going to come down to how many people are going to be, uh, impacted. How many people will be using, uh, theoretically this park? So it's. Uh, I guess our, our computations are using the number one thousand. Uh, and comparing it with acres, number of acres per thousand. And it's, it's still suggested that that number be ten. Are we okay with that?
I, I, I don't have any strong objection to it. It's, you know, it's a little hard to picture in my mind, uh. How that equates, uh, to that, that number of residents. But go, going by, by what Zach said, it sounds like the majority of municipalities are in the ten to fifteen range, so. Seems like we're in the ballpark.
Yeah, I, I would agree with you, Mark. I think that. Uh, while still rather arbitrary, it seems like, uh. There is some comparison with other communities to have a number in that range of ten or so. Rather than going up to a much higher twenty-five, thirty number. So, uh. I, I would agree myself that, uh, the proposal to do ten, I, I would agree with.
Yeah, and I, I also, I should have mentioned that I did ask for the recommendation of the state of Maryland Planning Department. The county, Frederick County Planning Department, MML. And they really didn't have a recommendation, but they thought ten was appropriate. Especially for pocket park goal.
Okay.
And going back to what I think I heard Joyce saying earlier, that she said it sounded like a lot. But is that what you said? You sounded, did you say it sounded like a lot? So.
I, I'm, yeah, I'm gauging that it's going to be based on the proposed dwelling units. But you're saying it's being based on the number of people.
Yeah, but, but you have to think that the calculation is being based on a thousand residents. I, I don't think the town has ever had a development with a thousand residents. So.
So either.
It, it might be a hundred residents or two hundred.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, so the amount of acreage is going way down per development.
Right.
And, and there was an example somewhere here. Can't put my finger on it now.
Yeah, that's, that's in a proposal, uh.
Yeah, so, so like fifty units would have one point three four acres.
Oh, that sounds reasonable.
Yeah, when you think of it in those terms, because I mean, the likelihood of us getting a development with a thousand residents. It, it's fairly remote.
Yeah. Okay, are we sort of consensus here to go along with the number ten?
Yes.
Good, Joyce?
Yes.
Okay, and I, I also, so. Uh, that, that would, I think Zach took care of your first item that you wanted our. Comments on. I guess we would just include that as one of our comments to say that. That we would agree with the recommendation of ten acres per thousand.
Perfect.
Resident. Is, is that all right?
That's perfect.
Okay, all right. So then you want to go on to the next one?
Yes, so, okay, here we go. So section F, this is, uh, this ordinance, as we just spoke about, allows bike, pedestrian or recreation trails to be counted as credit. For the required parkland. Um, trail shall be at least twenty feet in width. That means the easement itself should be twenty feet. Um, Commissioner O'Donnell has suggested that this section require developers install a two-trail system. If a, if a trail system is recommended in the particular development, one side of the trail would be paved. While the other side, uh, beside it would be non-paved. An example is shown in the, um, Planning Commission memo. Does the Planning Commission recommend a two-trail system or would it prefer a paved trail system? Um, or a paved single trail? The mayor and town staff recommend a paved trail only. Um, Commissioner O'Donnell did direct me to other municipalities that have the two-trail system. I reached out to, uh, both of those. And their two-trail system is more geared towards, uh, the paved section is for pedestrians and regular bikers. Um, bicyclists and the non-paved dirt trail is geared more towards horses and. Um. Uh, mountain bikes. So that's why we're not recommending the two-trail system at this time. We don't think it'd be appropriate for horse riders to be. That close to town and, uh, mountain bikers, especially since we have many mountain bike trails on our mountain as it is. So, do you rec, does the planning commission agree with our recommendation or would it prefer the two-trail system?
This is Joyce and I agree with your recommendation.
Okay.
What did you say, Joyce?
I reca, I recommend what Zach said, that we should go by the way he stated it.
With all that, with, with a single trail?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Mark, any thoughts or comments?
Yeah, I, I would have to agree. I'm having a tough time wrapping my head around having a horse trail in one of our developments. Because, I mean, the, the community parks for a development are primarily meant for those developments. For the most part. Um, and. You know, it, it's a little hard for me to think there's going to be horse stables inside the town limits at this point. But, uh. And, yeah, uh, and, and unless Mr. O'Donnell could give me a very good reason why we should be doing this, I'm not hearing it yet.
Also, I, okay, I failed to mention that there was one public comment through email regarding this section. Uh, Mr. Bob Mellor, M E L L O R. Of Three University Drive. Um, sent me an email and states, as an early adopter of using electric assist bikes. I would also encourage embracing their use when promoting trail usage. I can tell you as a seasonal, seasoned rider, the bike turns up the fun meter on the mountain trails. However, having a powered assisted bike has allowed my wife to get back to riding a hundred miles a month. Um, I would ask that you fully support a trail system that would extend from the mountains to the neighborhoods. So we're, we're not recommending that right now. We don't have any kind of, uh, grant funding or anything to do that. But he is in support of multi-use trails for bicycles, pedestrians, et cetera. So it doesn't really go in specifics for the, well, actually, no, it does. The subject states support of natural surface trail, so. I'm going to assume that means he supports the. So I just wanted to state that for the record.
Okay. But I think that, that kind of brings up another issue here, I think. Um. Well, I, well, at first it seemed like the question was whether or not we would concur with the requirement of having. A, a dual two-track trail versus one. And I realized that, uh, whether that trail, if it's a one, whether it needs to be paved or not. As a requirement. Uh, see, I could see that being broken down into another, another sub-issue there. But just to kind of go back, I, I, I felt when I first read this, that I just. Could not see where there's been shown the need in Emmitsburg to have a trail for horses. I, I just never, never occurred to me that that need would ever come up. Certainly, there are communities across the country, but I can't see Emmitsburg. Having the need for a horse trail like that. And I think it'd be very remote that any developer coming in for a subdivision would even suggest wanting to put in a horse trail. But I could be surprised. I, so. But if it comes down to deciding whether we should have, the trails should be one or two tracks. I certainly would go along with the one-track proposal here.
And I'm seeing in our memo that the mayor and town staff recommend a paved trail.
Correct. We will, we're, yeah, we will require a paved trail. Um, how it's written, it, it states, uh, that, that the engineers, um. It says engineered recommendation or something, let's see. But to sum it up, yes, it would definitely be true. Okay, it's a hundred percent.
Okay, so, so.
Okay.
I was going to ask, so it's not a possibility to have, uh, a natural surface trail?
No, no.
Okay. All right, so it would be.
So, well, well, let me.
One-track pay trail. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, never mind.
Okay, okay, are we? Are we in consensus here that we, uh. Our, our commission here is recommending that, uh, it be a one paved trail only. Uh, are we in agreement on that, Joyce?
Yes.
One paved trail. Okay, and Mark?
Yes.
Okay, and I, I also, so we can say is our second comment. To be added to the, the, the motion that will be made in a few minutes, that we, um. That we prefer the, the one paved trail. Um, if, if that situation comes up, is that okay now, Zach?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Moving on.
Moving on. Section G, this is the fee in lieu of, so the mayor and board of commissioners reserve the right to impose a twelve hundred dollar. Per residential dwelling unit assessment on those developments when they're in their judgment. The creation of additional recreation area is neither warranted or desirable. Um, after receiving input from the Maryland Municipal League, the mayor and town staff recommend increasing the current four hundred dollar fee. To twelve hundred dollars. Um, I am, I, I do want to state that I am recommending a complete impact fee study in next year's budget. So this will help us determine an appropriate exact amount that should be, um, in this section. So I'm, I'm going to assume that we're going to be revisiting this issue, this particular issue, um, in the next year or so. Um. Let's see, so does the planning commission agree with this proposed increase? This is basically what happened was MML came back to me and gave me a bunch of, um, municipalities throughout the state of Maryland. And what, what the mayor and I did, we basically just took the average and it's approximately twelve hundred dollars. So that's how we came up with that amount.
Okay. Thoughts or comments, Joyce?
Seems like a lot of money.
And, and that's, uh, that's per unit, right? Uh, Zach, twelve hundred per unit?
Yes, and it's per unit and the fee would go directly to our capital improvement. Uh, budget to be used only to improve our recreational, existing recreational facilities.
Okay, Mark, any comments?
Yeah, a- again, I, I, I guess I need to defer to. You know, Zach and the, the assessment of what other municipalities are doing. Um, it, I, I don't really have any way to figure out what it costs us to maintain the park or. Or like it, for example, if they don't do a park, I don't know what it would cost us to do something. In that same range or, or the same kind of park. Uh, if we were to translate that to, you know, putting the money into an existing park. I'm not sure I'm saying that very well, but. But, you know, if, if a development doesn't do a park, oh, let me back up a little bit. So, so. How much does an average park cost for a fifty-unit development?
Right, and that's a really good question and it really, it's, it's different for every single municipality. You know, the labor and the labor market and the materials are different for every single municipality. So that's what I was, I was kind of stating earlier that we want to do, uh, a complete impact fee study. In next year's budget. That's including our water impact fee, our sewer impact fee, et cetera, so.
Okay.
And it will include this, so it'll give us an exact number. So I know it kind of.
It may get amended next year.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, yeah. Well, with, with, with that in mind and based on what you're getting from other jurisdictions, I'm comfortable with this.
Okay, um. Now Zach, I'm, you, you have confused me by this being in there. Uh, and the reason I say that is it seems like we went through this whole issue back in August. When we, uh, we were reviewing the same, uh, subdivision. Uh, code. And we made a number of decisions about what was going to be in the proposed subdivision code. And as I was looking back through my notes, I found that we, we did indeed. Vote. Uh. On this very specific item, sixteen point sixteen. That we voted that the fees on this issue should be flexible without a specific amount. Entered in the code at this time. Uh. Somehow it seems like that decision never got put into the revised code that was just printed. A couple of months ago. Is that correct?
That's correct, and I do have an answer for that. So we checked with our attorney. And she recommended that the impact fees, because this is a, an impact fee. Uh, be actually in the code itself and not through a resolution or policy.
Now, where are the, um. Are the. What are the, the, um. In, in a later section of the subdivision. Reg. Where is it, uh? Um, let me get my numbers right here. Annexation fees and preliminary subdivision plat fees, are they? They're being treated differently?
Yes, so that's an application fee. Um, they're not impact fees. It's just like a zoning permit.
Okay.
Subdivision fee, et cetera.
Okay, so, so depending on the type of fee is whether or not the. Dollar amount can actually be in the, the, the code.
That's.
That's true. I, I didn't know that. I didn't know there were distinctions done that way.
That's correct.
Okay, because again, back in, in, when this, when this reg was changed. Last, what was it, September, that it actually got approved? Um. Of course, our, our recommendation did not get put in regarding the, the fees. Um.
And that was the reason. That was the only reason.
Yeah, and I, I, I understand. I just somehow, I, I, I wasn't aware of that. Um. I don't know, but I had another question on that. Oh, well, just that the. See, the code that we were reviewing back in August, they had a. It had a fee of three hundred dollars per unit.
Yes.
And it got changed to four hundred, and now we're talking about twelve hundred. Uh, we just keep changing that all the time, it seems like, and I, I just wonder if that's, if that's a smart thing to do.
That, you know, that's a very good point and I will. That, you know, that's a very good point, and I will be honest with you, there wasn't a whole lot of thought taken into that. We didn't reach out to MML at that time. Because. You know, that's basically an option. That was an option back then.
Okay.
So we didn't reach out to MML for that, and that's that was our mistake.
Okay. But. For the time being, anyway, I seem to get the. Feeling from from Joyce and Mark that. Just throwing in twelve hundred dollars is is an appropriate thing to do. Knowing in the back of our minds that a year from now that might get changed. Am I hearing this correctly?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, when you read this, and we're jumping from four hundred to twelve hundred, it seems like a large leap for sure. But, you know, based on what Zach was saying, that this is kind of average of. What jurisdictions are doing, it seems to be, you know, in the ballpark then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't have any big objection to it.
And something I should have brought up as well, the three hundred dollar figure, that was from the nineties. So when I talked to the mayor, he thought a four hundred would be appropriate at the time, but once we started dig really digging into it. Then we saw the costs are just ridiculous to build parks, so.
Okay. All right, well. Joyce, Mark, any last thoughts on this one?
I think it's high, but if that's the going price, I think we might as well go along with it.
Okay, okay, Mark, you okay with it?
Yes.
Okay, and and I I am too. So Zach, you can indicate that we agree with the proposed change to twelve hundred dollars per unit.
Okay, thank you. And then the last section is section F for exemptions. So the following will be exempt from this section of code, alterations or expansion of an existing building where no additional units are created. Construction of structures that do not serve as housing. Replacement of destroyed structure with new with a new structure of the same size and use. Construction of any non-residential structure and development that produces less than five units. So, Mr. Chairman, that is my presentation. On ordinance twenty-one dash zero one.
Okay, now I know that. Seems like the the mayor and the board was only interested in those. Three sections only, is that correct?
In particular, in particular, so if you if you all have more recommendations, they would still love to hear, you know.
Okay. So Joyce or Mark, do you have any questions or comments about the other sections of this of this proposed reg?
I just had a question about the the number five. That this would apply to developments that have five or more dwelling units. Here's where I'm having a little bit of an issue or a concern, five houses is not many at all. You know, I'm thinking if, I can't even picture right now where we would have a development that would have five or six houses, but I guess there might be a spot somewhere. But to require a development that's small to have a park. That seems a bit onerous to me.
Yeah.
Where does that number come from? How did we arrive at that?
That's again, it's a state standard. The other municipalities that have these similar ordinances. Basically, everybody uses that five number. It's either five or ten, it's it's either back and forth between the two. So you bring up a good point, if if a five, you know, unit development does come into play. The minimum lot size per the the code would be the minimum. Lot required in that particular zoning district, so. I really don't think the planning commission and the mayor and the commissioners would require a small pocket park like that. Depend, it really depends on the area. So you know, if it's up by Pembroke, where there's, you saw by the park equity map or the. The proximity map, where they really do need a park there. I could see them possibly requiring one there, or the other side in front of rudders. That massive area there where they're talking about doing commercial and and residential in the future. That's also deficient in the park proximity map, so. In those two areas, if it's five units, maybe, I could see maybe requiring it, but if it's in interior town, five units. I think it would be. It would be the fee in lieu of recommendation. If that makes any sense.
Okay, okay, so, okay. So if a development were to come in at five units, then the town commissioners could say, well, we don't want to park here, we want the fee in lieu instead.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Okay. Zach, I got a question. I guess it relates to. The section D as in dog. The requirements of dedication of public parkland. I think I I think I must be missing something when I read this over and connect with some of the other parts. That when it's a dedicated parkland, it needs to meet all of these items, which, fine. But I guess my question is. If if it's being, if it's going to be rejected as a dedicated, in other words, it becomes a private parkland. Do they still have to meet this criteria on this page? Because if it does, I can't find the connection.
Yes, so it has to meet these requirements in order to be a public park.
But I'm saying, if if it's not, if it's a private.
Yeah.
It came in as a dedicated, but the the town rejected it, therefore it gets done as a private. Park, okay, now, does that private park have to meet this criteria, and where does it say so?
Let's see. So, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah, I don't I don't think that it specifically states it has to meet these requirements. However, so if you want me to make that a comment to add that, I think that's a good idea. I know for a fact we staff level wouldn't allow a park that has a slope of in excess of eight percent and wetlands and flood plains.
Yeah.
I think that's actually a good, very good point.
I mean, maybe it's just a matter of changing the the title to that section. Right now, it just says requirement of dedication of public parklands, if you can somehow say that also includes private parklands in some way.
That's a very good point.
Why would you dedicate a private parkland?
So, yeah, we can change.
It becomes private, Joyce, if if a town rejects it, rejects it as a dedicated parkland. Then it becomes private parkland.
Yeah, so I think I need to reach out to our attorney and get that. I think I think that's a very good point. I think we should change that that section headline. To either requirement of dedication of public and private parkland, or requirement of parkland or something.
Okay. Are there any more questions or comments? Okay, if not, we're ready to entertain a motion. We do have some conditions already identified, so it looks like it would probably be. A motion for, what do they call it? A motion under described under section A of this part, so, so I might like to make that a motion.
I'll give it a whack.
Got to try, but I kind of lost it there.
I'll move to recommend approval of proposed ordinance twenty-one dash zero one with comments. The comments include that we concur with. Items one, two, and three. Under specific items for consideration. And also that the language be changed in section D of the ordinance to account for. The park being non-dedicated public park land.
Sounds good.
Okay, motion was made. To recommend approval with a with total of four conditions. That have been identified, is there a second?
I'll second that. Very nice.
Second made by Joyce. Any last questions or thoughts? Okay, going through a roll call. Indicate, yes, if you approve of the motion, no, if you do not.
Yes.
Joyce, this is that roll call vote, so you do yes or no, Joyce?
Yes.
Okay, Mark?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, we got three yes votes. Zero with a no, and that motion carries. Okay, we made it through there, folks. We made it. Okay, that's the last of. Our new business. Moving on to other business. See, Zach, when will we have the next meeting?
Our next meeting will be on January twenty-fifth. This will.
January twenty-fifth.
Yep, this will be.
Twenty-seventh.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Joyce?
Yeah, you said January twenty-seventh.
Twenty-fifth. Yep. Will be, at this point, it's only going to be the reorganization and the twenty-twenty annual report.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else you wanted to bring up at this time? Well, I have an item. This is my last meeting with you guys.
Oh. Really?
Yeah, my my term, my term on the commission expires in the middle of January. It'll be before the next meetings, so this is my last meeting with you all. And. Wanted to say that I've I've enjoyed these meetings. Talking with you guys. Joyce, Mark, Zach, I really enjoyed the opportunity. I've been with the commission now for quite a while. But time time to move on, so. So this will be it for me. And.
Well, gosh, that's that's a surprise. I didn't realize that was happening.
I really miss you.
Yeah, got to miss you.
Excellent job.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you. I will.
Thank you.
But I'll I'll be around town. I'm not going anywhere. I'll be here. I might run into you sometime out there. So I wanted to let you know that that this will be, this will be it for me. So with that, would somebody care to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. All those in favor, raise your hand. And. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks a lot, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Happy New Year to all of you.
Stay safe and healthy out there.
Thank you, everybody.